Like to call a planning board meeting to order. First on our agenda is to approve the planning board minutes from last meeting. Everybody but Jim. Sorry, thanks, Amy. Okay, back to proving the planning board minutes. Second. Motion by Norm, second by Dave. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is to prove Arlene's voucher.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Tim, second by Sandy. Any discussion? All in favor? First on our agenda is Gulfside Development rezoning. I believe that you, Mr. Hopkins. Well, it says both there. So what did we get? A larger one today? Is that what Bob gave us for your drawing? That's, that's not the larger one.
Different?
So that's the last one that we approved?
Yeah, so we're gonna start with the last year. So, good evening, everyone. John Hopkins, hello, I'm McHawkey, also with me is Rick Hake, the project engineer. We're back in the next one of the projects we will do many times over the past forty years. And that's Gulfside. For Gulfview Development Rezoning. So as you'll recall, we presented this project to last during your meeting on April tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Ultimately, at that point of thing, the board did issue a favorable recommendation to the town board on the request of re-zoning this project site. This is both residential R-two and commercial P-P-D. It is important to note, the site is nearly six acres in size. So we still concede some of the threshold of twenty-five acres. So this is the plan that we showed you last year. Over the course of the past ten months, including most recently a series of three separate workshop meetings with the town board, which we appreciate them providing that input during the meeting. We've gone back to the drawing board and made some changes. In addition to those changes that the town board has requested, me, myself, or Rick, myself, and Mr. Gerveng have also proposed some additional changes that we thought would be well received or were comfortable will be well received. So I'm gonna just walk through what the changes are. And if there's any questions, given of course, the lengthy project history, you can interrupt or ask questions of either Rick or myself. So the first change, so if you compare this to the original plan from the most recent plan that we presented to you in April of last year, we've reduced the number of four-unit townhome buildings from fifty-four to forty-eight. So we've eliminated six of those previously proposed four-unit townhomes. Secondly, we've reduced the number of multifamily units, which of course from what we presented to you at that point in time, which was a hundred twenty-nine units to sixty-five units. So basically, we've almost cut the density of that to half. So currently, what we're showing is four two-story multifamily buildings consisting of fourteen units each. And then, of course, we still do show, because ultimately, this is designated as the hammer, those three smaller mixed-use buildings out along Whitehaven Road front. Those are three multifamily units with first floor commercial space, and you can see they're highlighted in a different color. What we're hoping is that ultimately, in connection with this project, given that there'll be new people moving here, that there will be some demand for those local businesses on the first floor of that space. Third, probably most importantly, in terms of the hierarchy of the modifications we've made, we've increased the number of single-family lots from thirty-nine all the way to seventy-two. That's an increase of eighty-four point six percent. And how have we done it? Number one, back to the old plan. We've eliminated the cul-de-sac. There were always some concerns about cul-de-sacs and maintenance by the town, snowplows, et cetera, et cetera. So we've come up with a new design in which we've eliminated the cul-de-sac. And what the town board asked us to consider was putting some single-family homes possibly on one side of what would now be that public road. Mr. Gerveng, in an effort to try and reach a consensus sooner than later, went beyond the input received and said, you know what? Let's put single-family homes on both sides. So that now, not only the homeowners on Timberlake, but all of those homeowners on East River Road, we have single-family homes backing up the single-family home. And there were a couple of the board members who were presenting this over the course of two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-three that had that same problem. So we have now made that change, which is a pretty dramatic change, and I think really does work well in terms of compatibility of the proposed use with the existing nearby. Number four, as I indicated, by eliminating that cul-de-sac, we now have a public road that loops around the entire site. I do want to note, there's this orphan parcel here. And I believe one of the members was Mr. Worrell, who expressed some concerns about this, meaning, well, how's that gonna get developed in the future? Well, it's two point two nine acres in size, somewhat irregular shape. So now what we're showing is Mr. Gerveng being responsible for installing a public road along the edge of that site, which would accommodate its future development. He will do that at his cost, but for the fact that it will accommodate development of that parcel, it wouldn't necessarily be necessary to install that now. We're gonna go ahead and do that. And it is important to Mr. Gerveng himself has attempted several times to contact the owner of that parcel. And so far, it's not been successful. If that parcel can come into play with respect to the project team, then we'll give some consideration. But the good news is now it can be developed and it will have drainage on a public road. Number five, we were asked to consider maybe some diversity in terms of the footprints and styles of the townhome buildings. Previously, we only had one style. Now we're showing three separate available styles of townhome buildings rather than a single, single building type. So that will result in some additional housing diversity, will result in some additional choices. Keeping in mind that those townhome units are envisioned to be for sale. I mean, those will be for sale, hopefully for occupancy by the future purchasers. We've increased the number of visitor parking spaces spread out throughout the townhome portion of the project from thirty spaces to thirty-six spaces. It's also important to note that we have driveways in front of the individual townhome units as well. The amount of permanent open space has decreased, it decreased very slightly. From twenty-three point three three acres, which equals thirty-five point six percent of the site, keep in mind twenty-five percent required, to twenty point zero, twenty point nine acres, which is thirty-one point nine percent of the site. And really, the only reason that's occurred is because now you have lots that go along with the single-family homes. Yards, while that screen space doesn't technically count under your code as permanent open space. It is important to note, we're still showing, you know, nearly a mile of trails interspersed throughout the project site, some decorative features, landscaping along Whitehaven Road. So we really think with the input of the town board and the project team, although we did receive a favorable recommendation from this board ten months ago, we were asked to come back and present it again. And of course, we're hoping that you will now, once again, make a favorable recommendation, especially given the fact we already had one. But I think we can all probably agree that for the most part or all part, all these modifications that we've made over the course of the past ten months are good changes. To reduce the density, to add housing diversity, we've made so single-family homes will be a case of the single-family homes, et cetera, et cetera. So in a nutshell, that's what we've done. I believe this will be on the town board's agenda during its meeting on March fourth for a public hearing. And then ultimately, the town board will be responsible for PDD zoning or via overlay in development concept plan approval. Then there's a lot of additional hard work that begins, meaning Rick will then be responsible or tasked with preparation of fully engineered plans, and that'll come back through the process for your two-step PDD review process. I don't know if there's much else, Rick, that you'd like to add? Again, welcome questions or input that any of you may have.
Are your trails paved?
The trails internal to the townhome portion are not painted.
Would just be a gravel or a?
Gravel or, or a woodchip or something like that.
So they would not be maintained in the winter then?
Yeah.
So how big are, oh, go ahead, Dave.
I just, just procedurally, since this was approved as a PDD, are we amending the PDD or are we creating a new PDD?
We're creating a new PDD, Bob and Chad. I believe we're creating a new PDD overlay, keep in mind the existing zoning is R-two.
Yes.
And B, B-one, B-one. So remember, it never actually has been approved by the town board. You issued a recommendation. We've been working with the town board over the course of the past ten months. So again, I think it would be a recommendation, that's again, and then the town board would all know it if they're so inclined.
So we're recommending an amended PDD or a rec? Okay.
Based on this plan, because remember, PDD is based on a plan.
I understand. So we had a plan. We approved it or recommended it, and now we're gonna.
Yeah, if anything, if you make a motion, I would say, you know, note the current, you're commenting on a currently submitted plan. Because they never did, the town board never finalized it. You guys have made a recommendation, but the town board never finalized it. They took your recommendation and then pushed for changes, pushed for changes, which is where we're at. So you're still at the rezon being the base thing, two PDD and a development concept.
And the date of, the date of that new plan for purposes of a recommendation is January thirtieth, two thousand. It is rapid.
Yeah, this one says the seventh. So no, I think.
Now look at the revision.
Yeah, the revision.
The, the width of the lots, single families, are those seventies?
The ones along Timberlake are eighty by one sixty. The other lots internally and along East River due to the buffer area there are the R-two required seventy by one point.
And if you'll recall, we were asked originally, our Timberlake lots that are contiguous to Timberlake were the minimum required by R-two. We were asked to increase those dimensions to the R-one D standard. Which is what the zoning of the contiguous property is, and we did that. While it's PDD and, you know, those would meet the R-one D requirement. So lots that are literally contiguous to the rear of the home.
And the reason to drop them to seventies on the other East River and on the other side of the street?
Well, I mean, in terms of the lot depth. You mean here or here?
The bottom.
Well, again, in terms of lot depth, we have all this green space. And I know there's been this misnomer that that green space is jurisdictional wetlands. In fact, it's not. We have a jurisdictional information, but we're doing that based on the R-two. We have single-family homes, green space, rear, rear homes on East River in the home. So I think, I think it's a, in terms of compatibility, I think it's a dramatic improvement.
John, I know there were some concerns about the townhouses, the driveways being all single-car, these appear to be bigger now.
Yeah.
Have these two-car driveways or?
There's, there's a mix of building size units. So the, the smaller units have a, have a single-car garage and move for a single vehicle in the driveway. The other two versions, the larger unit has a two-car garage to it and then additional two cars in front of it. And then the one in between also, I believe, has two-car garage. Same, and enough space for two cars. So the additional parking spaces spread throughout the townhome portion of the development are to accommodate an additional you know, visitor parking.
Right.
For, especially for the smaller units.
Was there one talk of sidewalks or no? Internal sidewalks?
There are sidewalks on, on public roads, right? But internally for the townhome portion of the development, that's where the.
The trails that are.
It's kind of like Fairway Greens, they don't have sidewalks.
But the trails are, we don't know what they are. They're not paved. They're maybe stone. Or something else, you said. What else could it be?
I, I have not gonna be asphalt. I mean, the intent is not asphalt, but it could be impacted gravel or something like that. I have one of those that have parked right near me in the motorway.
I've had something to say regarding comments. I have a similar idea, Bob.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Go ahead, Bob.
We're looking at, it appears public road, I think.
Those blue roads are public.
So one of the issues that hands is the return leg that comes out the Whitehaven Road on the G-stand side. You've got a full parking lot directly exiting onto it. I don't know if you've got a way maybe to reconfigure, putting the building in and having drivelines. It then takes that parking off the down road. Ninety-degree parking is kind of a commodity and something that would have him saying, having a little angst against us. Taking that for ownership, there's no snowplow storage. There's no anything that we would typically work with. So that's, that's problematic to us, and I don't know if there's a way to get an end in a lane or whatever by bringing buildings in or something.
Well, we can take a look at it and see if there's a way that, that internal. I think actually the island between the, kind of the between the parking spaces could be extended out to the, to the edge of roadway. And then there's, there's, you know, room between the road and the sidewalk before you get to the parking. So all the parking would be on the sidewalk.
But the, you're saying the concern is if there's not green space, count levels and blocks.
Property damage, yeah. Property damage, whatever. It is not our typical model.
Right.
For what a town road is, so on-street parking just isn't.
We'd be okay with the recommendation reference that you do.
Yeah, I mean, it, it appears there's enough room for you to move that building.
I believe there is.
Yeah. It's just more, it's just more paving, but.
I mean, if necessary, remember, we can put, we can put some green space here, have a single connection point, have the parking right behind the.
Right, right.
Yeah, you basically put it outside, right?
Like you would see on a commercial.
How, how, how many square feet is the commercial space? Forty-one fifty times three?
So twelve thousand square.
Anyone else have any other comments?
Six square foot in there, in the most heart.
Yeah, that's what we're. I know the plot, given where that is, I mean, they're, they're gonna be.
Right.
So the buffer between this project and the existing B-one that's there that belongs to someone else is just gonna be the road is gonna be the buffer, correct?
Yeah, it's a green space along.
Along the edge where?
No, you got a sidewalk too.
Yeah, there's gonna be sidewalk. So like, you know, there should be space here, empty space here. And then you are gonna have a sidewalk. That'll, that'll, that'll be actually a pretty nice street.
Well, you, it shows a sidewalk on both sides of that street.
So the side, the sidewalks are gonna run on all the town-proposed roads, correct? Both sides? But the townhomes and apartments will be using the trail system?
Or just the, the park.
Or the street?
That's typically you find.
Right, that's like every other one on the island.
And everywhere it was.
So i- is there really enough parking there for those twelve thousand retail spaces? I mean, we need a hundred and seventy-five, hundred and seventy.
So we're showing. So for the mixed use, we're showing a minimum of one space per hundred seventy-five square feet of retail. So we're comfortable, that's enough. That's literally.
Yeah, that's the code, one seventy-five. Yep. So that's, so there must be seventy spaces in there someplace?
Yes, there is. Somewhere on the, on, if you, Mr. Doosher, if you include the front and the back, you see several of them are on the back.
So the retail spaces would.
The apartment should probably use the back, and the front would be retail.
So you've put the distance between the buildings at forty-five feet?
Yes.
Isn't code sixty?
For R-two, yes. And again, if you go way back, so we had a plan that was actually, believe it or not, higher density in terms of townhomes with the sixty-foot with code compliant on R-two zoning. And the feedback we got, and actually kind of you agreed with the feedback, was that looks like barracks. I mean, everything was just rather uniform. I think it's a much more creative layout. It actually was not Rick's plan, but I think, you know, now we've come up with something, while it is forty-five feet in some instance between the buildings, it's just a way back layout. I mean, this is actually a better layout than if you develop the site based on the.
How, how deep are the driveways to the units?
They're at thirty foot setback.
So in the private roads, did you consider space for snow?
Bowing snow? They are basically, the roadways are built, are designed to town standards and then a thirty-foot setback, which is a difficult setback for.
Yeah, meaning we're not asking, we're not trying to deviate from the town standard for those roadways. They're just private, which actually, from the town's perspective, I think is good. You don't have the responsibility to lock for making this.
But that would all be HOA?
Would you consider another curb cut onto Whitehaven? Just to the west of those three buildings? I'm, I'm thinking about somebody arriving at the retail space. Yeah, and they would want to come in that first entrance and drive by all those residences to get into the retail. If you had a, a loop there of getting in and getting out, it might have less traffic through the residential part.
If, if that's something that the board recommends, my personal opinion is the fewer curb cuts you have on a roadway, the better off you are.
Yep.
Fewer points of capital.
Right. Yeah.
And ultimately, remember, that's a county road, and I think the county's gonna want us to try to minimize some of the curb cuts as well.
I'm sure that most people coming east on Whitehaven are gonna come in that first entrance and cut in to get to the retail.
Well, there may be some that do that. I think, you know, access to the roadway right next to the buildings there, making a right turn in and then a right turn into the parking lot.
Which is a right side.
Right, would be. Would be the majority of the traffic. I don't see the majority coming in all the way down to the west and then working our way through. I think most would just go directly to that access point. But it's something we can look at and discuss with the county, how they.
Yeah, Dave, we could add that to the, to a motion, and then it's up to the county to say, well, we don't want the four.
Yeah.
At least we could, we could ask for the fourth, and then if, yeah.
We'd be fine with that. Probably, probably traffic is safe. You guys should all hold on, consider something.
Sure.
Any other questions from it? Go ahead, Brad.
I just have a question for Pete. I know you guys have been working through workshops and everything. Is this generally what the town was looking for?
Well, I would say rather frankly, that we didn't love the first rendition of the planning board put through. We thought that the group was gonna improve this. I think this checks a lot of boxes. To the point where we thought, you know, a lot of things, things would have been more looked at. But this is quite a different.
Oh, it is, and I, I think it's better.
Definitely better.
Rather than having the townhouses in these people's backyards, this is a much better use. These are, I'm assuming, gonna be all patio homes, ranch-type thing.
Yes.
Because of the smaller lot, so.
So one thing I did mention to them, there, I, I'm pretty sure I'm bored of this, talking about maximum square footage. On those lots. So we don't run up to four thousand, four thousand five.
Right, I would, I would imagine something like cottage wood. I would imagine something like what, what, what's his name builds?
Stickle.
Stickle, stickle builds.
Trying to just make sure that the house estate appropriately sized and that.
Right.
What, what is your?
No step ranches, and they'll be sold to buy, so.
What are you, what is your thought for square footage on the homes, single-family homes?
Just, just word of caution because of the doll bill issues that happened a long time ago. With the small lot, keep in mind you're, you have a rear yard setback. We ran into an issue almost immediately with small, with the smaller lots when somebody tried to put a guy in the back of their house. So please, pay attention to what your bill.
That's tickles like eighteen. That's tickles like eighteen hundred. Those little ranches. Fifteen to eighteen? That's, I mean, that's all they need to be.
I think that was where the developers.
Each of them.
Well, you weren't actually, no, you weren't on that property.
Each of the homes will each have, they'll all have garages?
Yes.
Single or two-car?
I think you're gonna see a mixture, but I think there's a lot of people. That's general.
Well, you're gonna have, what would that be, Bob? Ten-foot side yard setback, or Casey? Maybe I should direct that to you. Ten-foot site on, on the seventy-foot wide lots?
Well, R-two.
If you model it after our zoning, or as a PDD, you literally can't write the zone. So that's gotta get crafted into this, what the basis of it is.
But not at this particular stage. That's gonna come farther.
You said there would be a place over the boxes for the homes, the control room, and a minimum of ten-foot setback.
So that's seventy less twenty. Yeah, now you're down to fifty. You got a twenty-foot garage. Now you got a thirty-foot wide front, front of your house. You're gonna have to drop footage, maybe go drop these to fifteen to seventeen fifty on the square footage to be able to fit them, so they don't look like you got a big moose on the little postage stamps. Right.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, I mean, like Stickle's house, right? The garages are in the front, the house goes back behind the garage. And they're all, they're all on smaller lots. The standard patio, if you wanna call it.
Anyone else have any other thing else they'd like to ask or comment?
Bob, what's your part?
I, I was gonna, there's two, there's two questions I wanna ask Casey, just clarification.
Okay.
Their guy's application too, is, you know, you're saying R-one E. Now, there's two different R-one E lots that have been identified and are zoning. One was on.
They broke R-one D.
R-one D.
D is eighty by one sixty.
That's what those are along.
Right, right, and I got that. But then the sub E in our code.
The remainder are based on R-two.
Okay.
Alright, so along Timberlake, they're designed to be R-one D standards, and you actually asked us to do that way back one. And the rest are based on the, what would be the existing R-two standards. And Bob is right, in connection with the PDD, of course, ultimately, there's discretion to establish specific setbacks, so it can be different. But I think what we're saying is we can live with the R-two setbacks.
The original plan, when you guys came in, you had townhouses up here.
We did.
And that was the issue. These people in their backyard, they were looking at a two-story townhouse, and they wanna look at that all close together. I think this is, I mean, I didn't mind the old plan. I think this one is a hundred percent better.
You don't have any facility for a recreation or a common area, do you?
No, at that number of units, at sixty-five units, you can just, you can't justify a separate community facility. Now, ultimately, there is a possibility. So we hope that those mixed-use buildings are well-received. But no one can guarantee, you can drive up and down right now and over, see there's a ton of vacant retail space. There would be a possibility, it'd be something to review, that if that doesn't work out, maybe a community facility, community building goes in one of those. So we have, we have that flexibility. And when we've done that in other municipalities, that's been pretty well-received. It's, yeah, that's mixed use. For a space that presents in a community.
Where, where do the seventy-footers begin down lower, bottom left?
Lot seventeen.
Right in the corner there.
Lot seventeen?
Yeah, it would be after, after this extension that, that matches up over on Timberlake, these would, we'd start the seventy by one.
So any lot that literally is contiguous, the rear Timberland, has the R-one D.
And then why is that different from East River?
Well, we think it's different because of obviously the distance. And we still, again, remember, we gave up townhomes. We're giving up a ton of density. And there's green space by the. And again, housing diversity, now think about it, we have every. And again, how diverse you now, think about it, we have every kind of town that's diverse, if they have R one D lots. R two lots, which are probably more appropriate for whatever it's all I own. We have three styles of townhomes.
I I got all that. I just don't understand why the R one D wasn't wrapped around the perimeter, East River and Timberlake. I mean, you're talking about maybe losing a couple of lots. You know, in the overall, you know, adding ten, ten feet to each lot. You've got seventy to forty, no, seventy. The forty. Twenty lots. You're, you're talking about losing a couple of lots to.
I think again, you know, if zoned R two, given the amount of green space, you might.
Yeah, but.
Town board didn't even ask for it. This was townhomes in the last residence.
I I got that and we, I got that. I understand that. I'm just saying that this plan is very similar to an older one that came through years back with the big Loop Road. Matter of fact, Loop Road was a, a restless soul, Bob Sarsinski's. Uh, comment at the time.
Yeah, but that was a Loop Road with townhouses in it.
No, there were lots on the back, because we were complaining about the size of the lots. We wanted them to match. Timberlake and the, and the low, and I said, the lowest lots you have on East River are eighty wide, so why can't? Those be at least a minimum of eighty wide?
During the, the review process for this project, which goes back to pre-COVID, I know there's never been single-family home show along.
Well, there was at one point. I I think it might have been before you came on board, actually. And that was brought up then, because I said, you know, e- even, I I lived down the street towards the end of the, where the pond is down there and. Those lots are all eighties and those were all Franks at one point. And and I didn't have the, the nerve to ask you for a bigger lot when I had owned an eighty footer. Do you know what I'm saying? I couldn't say, wow, you gotta put hundred twenties across in the back there when I, I I lived on an eighty. So I was fair, I thought I was being fair asking for the eighties.
What are all the sizes of, like cottage wood? The the patio homes that Stickle built over out in the baseline, what, what size are those lots?
That was a different type of development. No, that was a cluster development.
No, but I mean, it's still, it's still the same patio home style.
Oh, I don't have a problem with the internal seventies at all. I just have an issue with this one perimeter on East River being seventies. When you have a lot of bigger lots on East River. You know, a lot of these homes are, like my current home is a hundred and six. And I think I'm behind maybe lot thirty-four now.
But you won't be able to see these days, I don't believe.
Are you kidding me? They're gonna be front and center.
Really? I mean, you can see through the woods there?
There's no woods left. They're all dead. And the ravine has got to be every drop and maybe Bob might even know, it's gotta be every drop of twelve feet deep. So any greenery that grows in the ravine doesn't stop anything. I mean, in the winter months, I can see the Eldons clear as day. You know, when we had all the, the growth back there before the, the tree bug came in, was a whole different ballpark. My other question to you is this, now that you've mentioned that that is not a federal wetland and it was designated a federal wetland at one time. Now that they've changed that designation, what is your? Proposal for the mess of all the dead.
We'll have to take a look at that.
Trees and that whole ravine. I mean, they cleaned up the one end by East River is all cleaned out. I think the last house, Jim Sedida, I think he did it himself. But from there, I mean, behind my houses, it looks like a war zone. There must be twenty trees laying every which way. Trees half fallen over. Last year I had one come down, landed six feet away from my house. So what, what is the, the thought process for? I, I understand that. I'm just saying, what's the process for? So you're just gonna leave the mess?
Well, no, I'd say neither Rick or I could.
I mean.
I would, I would want that a part of the, any motion made, yes.
But I mean, if you're gonna try to sell homes there, you can't have. That in the backyard. People are gonna expect that to be cleaned up. So if there's a bunch of dead trees all over the place, they're gonna have to be cleaned up and hauled out of there.
Well, yeah, but let's make sure that that gets done.
Well, I I don't have any objection to that. I think we should do that, absolutely. I mean, they're trying to make this into a beautiful project.
I have no problem with that, none at all. Oh, no, no. I'm not blaming anyone. I'm just saying that unfortunately, the, unfortunately, the problem is here and it's on his property. And now that is, if it was a federal wetland, you couldn't have touched them. You couldn't take any machinery in there at all unless you get a ten thousand dollar fine a day. But now that it's declassified and it's not a federal wetland, you can go in there and with the machines and. Bush hog them or even if you laid them. With the current, right now, the, the, the water that's backed up in there is backed all the way up to the end here. Because they can't get past all these dead trees. And and I'm sure if you followed anything on the island, Supervisor Marston just put out a, a big thing about our creeks and streams. A- and I would think that, I don't know where this, Bob, where does this originate? Where does the water originate down there? Does, does it just come at, at the end and that's it where Timberlake is? Okay, okay. Yeah. Okay, any, any, oh, go ahead, Jennifer.
Well, we think, again, what we showed originally was a hundred twenty-nine units. The town board expressed a concern of certain members about the density. Maybe that was consensus. So we think what we're proposing now, sixty-five is a reasonable number, not sixty. It's tough to do like twelve units or twenty-four units, but you know, you have to have enough for ceiling.
I'm just looking at what's around it and, you know.
No.
What's across the street, down the street.
Right, and we tried deliberately to tuck that. I think everyone agrees, mixed-use buildings are gonna happen, that's where they are. Makes sense, so. Those are tucked behind and Rick has tried to stay true to his, you know, usable central sticks for green space. So I just, I think it, I think it's. Pretty good compromise.
I, I think you've done a nice job with the transition, which is, when I was on the R two committee was the whole thing. To have this transition, you know, so it's just not one code banged up against another. Where you've got the single-family homes, the townhomes, moving towards that commercial apartment storefront area. I mean, you, you can't complain about that, that's.
Just two comments.
Tim, go ahead.
One, I don't think you can do anything about this, but. As soon as these lots go in. On the southern side, people are gonna start putting up sheds. Off their property into the open space. I'm sure everybody's saying, no, that won't happen. They need to get a permit, but, I mean, you can see what happened on Timberlake.
That's HOA.
And everywhere else. Is this part of the HOA?
Oh, yes.
So. It would probably have to be in the HOA that there's consequences for doing that. Uh, and I would also agree with that these should be eighty-foot lots on the outside. I like the transition with eighty. Width on the outside, then transition to seventy and then the higher density. That way.
Tim, would you, would you want? Them to put in our motion that the HOA should say no sheds?
No, no, I, I'm fine with sheds, but.
No, I think what you want is.
There, we don't wanna shed, you know, thirty feet into the open space.
I think what you want is, so obviously, we've already indicated, we're gonna put a declaration of restriction in place, right? If you wanna make it as part of your recommendation, that it, language being included, you know, no accessory structures for homes, lots that are J's. And I understand Tim's concern, just something you gotta regulate. But when you have an HOA, the good thing is, guess what? They have the power and the enforcement abilities to.
Right, and most HOAs don't want that in their backyards, especially if they're paying for the grass to be. That's why there's never fences in them or anything like that.
But I understand.
Well, I, I just expect somebody on East River to say, hey, why is there a shed behind my house? You know, right behind.
Well, I mean, that's. In the back lot, I mean, you're looking at a hundred and eighty feet.
It's off to the ravine.
I, I lived where, uh, the Stickle patio homes went and. And there was a huge issue, including my house, with a shed that was not on my property. When I bought it.
Oh, right, that, you mean, the one that the guy was building and it wasn't even on his property?
Yeah.
Just there were, all the way along there, there were sheds, not on people's property.
Can I start a motion to approve and list some of the stuff that we've been ma- mentioning and then everyone can see if there's something I missed? And then we can go from there? Is that okay with the board?
Yep.
Sure.
Okay, here's my motion to approve. One was the parking on, I'm gonna call that the east Loop Road that Bob Westfall mentioned. The public, right? That that be moved off of the. How did you want that, Bob? You want that off of the road? Off-road, to be off-road parking? Okay. Correct. Uh, a second, or, or let's call this the fourth curb cut. To the west of the commercial area that Dave mentioned. Now, we understand that.
Can we say subject to review?
We're understand whatever the county tells us what's gotta happen. That's fine. Uh, we'd like the lots seventeen to forty to be eighty feet wide lots. We'd like your HOA to say no accessory structures from lot seventeen to forty. Are you good with that, Tim? Or all the way around?
I would, I would just say. Major, serious restrictions to any. Development in this open space.
Okay. We're good with that language?
Yeah, just to note, I mean, I just did a calculation. If you change the seventies to eighties, you would lose three lots.
It's no big deal, not in something this big.
That's on the south side of the, the rim road.
Um, also that there would be, you would look into this. I'm gonna call it a ravine, the, the, the old federal wetland area, you're gonna deed restrict that. And you're gonna look into some type of a maintenance plan. To clean that up to, to some degree. I mean, something's gotta happen there. Is that okay? And we got that done, okay.
I would, I would just add, Dave, that, um, the eighty-foot lots, um. Agree with the R one D district and the seventy-foot lots agree with the R two district.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else have anything else they'd like to add?
No.
Yes.
I, I agree with everything you said, except for changing those lot sizes.
Well, you, 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 you can, you can vote however you gotta vote, Brad. Okay, that's the motion.
I mean, I, I'm gonna, I would. I would vote to approve that, but I, I.
Depending on the basis of the vote. And I don't know what anybody else is gonna do or say with that. If it goes down, you, you, you or others could vote negative to it. If there's a majority of it, it doesn't pass, a second resolution could be made.
Sure, let's, right now, my.
Swapping that in, but you have to see where you.
Yeah, right now, my motion is the way it stands with the eighties. Uh, anyone second?
I'll second.
Second motion by me, second by Tim. Any further discussion?
I would just say procedurally, we're amending the, um, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. PDD plan and substituting it for it, this January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four plan as the PDD.
Correct, we have to add that to the motion and I agree with that. Tim, you're good with that too? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was Norm, Tim, Dave, Sandy and myself, all against.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, that was Amy and Brad against. Motion carried.
I would say based on the resolution, yes.
Yeah, that's our recommendation to the town. Yeah, that's our recommendation to the town board. They could, they could say, we'll take one, two and three and not four. That's, thank you, sir. Next on our agenda is the local law M one district. Okay. Yes, sir. Okay, I had, uh, sent out to you folks on the board here. Uh, Arlene did a nice job of trying to compare the last. Law we turned down to the new one, the new version, and also the letter from the county that referred to the last version of the law. Change, proposed change. I don't know, Arlene, do you remember? I thought it was, uh, four to three against or something. For approval, okay, I'm sorry, Supervisor, you're correct and I was wrong there. So now we're seeing a new version, correct? Okay, just if, if you got the new version in front of you. Section one, four oh seven ten, this whole section is all new, added to the language under definitions of the code. Four oh seven eighty-one, the next thing, principal uses and structures. Everything is in the code except. Um, warehouses, distribution centers is omitted. And. Add, well, mini storage was omitted and then added back in and then number N was added. Warehouses to be a total floor area of seventy-five thousand square feet. Four oh seven eighty-three is added as a special use. Four oh seven eighty-three A is added as a special use. And four oh seven eighty-seven A was added to, to go from the hundred thousand square feet the last time to one fifty. Now, if you read the county's letter. My, my question to the board is this, is now, the new law, Bob, goes back to the county, correct? Okay, so is that, is that? The new one, yes, and they have thirty days or something to respond. Is it something that we wanna wait for that letter to come back? Before we vote and table this? Do we get that letter? Or do we wanna march forward?
My, my suggestion is we, we go ahead, Dave. The, I mean, I, I've seen these, uh, letters on, um, municipal lot. Two thirty-nine M from the county. They really have no weight. The county has no jurisdiction here. They can recommend, but they can't, uh, prevent the town from dealing with it, only. Require the board to have a supermajority, uh, when they vote on this. Um, there's also a checklist form that's supposed to go with this letter when it comes back. Did we get the checklist? Because the bottom line of the checklist really tells the story as to whether it's recommended or not, and I don't see the checklist.
We just referred it to them.
That's the old one from the old law, uh, Dave.
We got the one November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Is there another one?
Yeah, one just, this, the revision, which is the law you have in front of you now, just left to them. Because the town board just put that together and just referred.
Right, they have thirty days to answer on the new draft, Dave.
Well.
The other letter was the old draft.
Yeah, we could table it, but, you know, my understanding is the county. Yeah, we could table it, but you know, my understanding is the county has no power here. They can only recommend. They're concerned with town after town after town um uh eliminating or minimizing the amount of warehouse space that's available in the county. They can recommend, but they cannot do anything other than require the town board to go with a super majority.
Anyone else have any comments on the new draft? I mean, I just think that you're I I I understand what your position, Dave, on the county, what you're saying about the county, but their letter just, you know, it makes a lot of sense. And you're you're hindering your tax base, you're hindering your existing businesses to grow on the island. And you're hindering, you know, new new stuff coming in. I mean, our our commercial tax base, and I'm sure Supervisor Marson can confer with this is low, down. And residential's high. We 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 should look for our commercial to be paying their fair share of the tax base because there's no one going to school in commercial development.
But that that that's true, David. I don't I don't discount some of the points they make in this in their in their letter, but it has no weight.
You're saying it has no legal weight from the county. I'm just saying that I I understand that point. My 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 point is is that they're making a lot of sense to say, you know, don't stifle your growth of your township. Otherwise, what's gonna happen? And what happened when Judy come, you know, when she did her presentation on the tax base for our training was if things don't change on the commercial and come up, the residential is just gonna keep going up, and you're gonna be taxing all the residential landowners here for the bulk of instead of the commercial development being brought in. And commercial, you know, growth is gonna happen whether we want it or not. I mean, that's, there's no way around that. And this, you know, to tell people that, well, now you're stifled, that you, you know, like this one thing in here says distribution facility. Retail customers on site more than twelve days a year. Well, who's gonna enforce that? Are someone gonna sit out front of that warehouse and decide whether how many days they're open? I mean, that that's that that's like me telling Supervisor Marson, I don't want you selling lawnmowers except on Sundays. And once a month. Like, I I don't think that's right at all. You know, and then to, you know, to to say that, you know, you what you're gonna do is knock the big, you know. I understand there's a lot of talk about the Long Road project. But that man's owned this land for thirty-plus years, paid his taxes. It's always been M one. When they did the comp plan, back to M one, it didn't change. And then now you wanna say, well, you can't build more than a hundred fifty thousand square feet on a two hundred and some acre site. Like, I I, you know, I understand if you have a postage stamp lot, you can't build a five hundred thousand square foot building on it, but it won't fit anyway. So you're gonna hinder, like, obviously, the medical places on Staley, their growth. If they decide to grow, then what are they gonna do? They're gonna move off. Then you're gonna lose that tax base. You know, I I don't care how you cut the pie. I've been in business for forty years, self self self-employed here. Uh, the town is a business, money in, money out. And you need the money coming in to pay the bills going out. It's gotta come from somebody. If it doesn't come from your commercial base in in these like, you know, I I know, let's not talk about the Amazon thing, but they were talking about paying a million dollars a year in taxes, a million bucks a year.
Yeah, and I think this goes beyond just talking about warehouse sizes because the one hundred fifty thousand square feet maximum in the M one and M two districts is a total gross floor area of all buildings on a business campus. So, I mean, I I would wanna, I'm actually thinking this might affect, this might, you know, some of our existing business campuses may be bigger than that right now on Staley Road. Could I ask, maybe have a sense of where that figure, a hundred fifty thousand square feet, might have uh where that concept might have come from or what went what went into that limitation?
So I believe it's up to seventy-five thousand to allowable use. Seventy-five to one fifty is allowable on special use for that.
Right.
So it's it's an asset of right use, but with special permission. So just, in other words, uh, I'll say, uh, increased reviewing for traffic. And we we felt that anything that's over seventy-nine thousand square feet would potentially have some impact beyond the site. Having traffic, stuff like that around the area. So we wanted the opportunity to weigh in and say, you know what? You can build a hundred forty-nine thousand square foot warehouse here, but we're gonna ask you to put a turn away. What I asked you to put, the traffic to be. That's kinda why we we put the limit at seventy-five and made it go to one fifty, so that we can call the ball a little bit off-site. So if these things have impacts, we can, so for example.
I would, my question would be not uh where did the upper, where did the ceiling limit of a hundred fifty thousand maybe come from? Okay.
My buildings that are here and the effects they have.
Life tech.
Certain numbers, trainers, sort of thing. We have some hard seventeen, we have one delay I can pick up.
Executives.
Seventeen thousand square feet as zero. Not, you need to know it's there.
Life technologies.
Their minimal on on employees. We got a lot of hundred twenty, hundred ninety.
A lot of.
And a lot of people love that. Effecting road volume and neighborhood volume like and things like that. But that being said, we thought that would be a good trade, somebody wants to, for example, if somebody was to have a hundred thirty thousand square foot uh commercial building and effectively be surrounding the area, we would have the opportunity to say, we're gonna affect the surrounding area. Help us, you know, mitigate some traffic, some traffic mitigation and maybe some road improvement on the building side. So that's, that's where those numbers kind of came from. That's from existing stock.
Mm-hmm.
And I want you to also keep in mind, nobody ever says this, but a hundred fifty is allowable use. And that's by special use on that law. Like, there is no you can ask to do anything, like anything that's allowable.
Oh, okay.
So then that's gonna kick into incentive zoning.
Yeah. We're referring to set of zoning plans and we're gonna put a traffic light here, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, we're gonna put a trail through here. And would you would you then miss it? We absolutely can. So there is no hard, there is no hard brick ceiling on any.
Okay.
Somebody can come in, a lot of those, a uranium mine and on ground mold, of course, that's not even supposed to be allowable. But they could, they could offer a set of zone package and maybe they're gonna pay ground taxes for us fifty years or something, and we can think about it. It's still probably be known, and you understand my point.
So they could apply for a variance and propose larger, you know.
Correct.
Different something. Yeah.
You know, we know we're gonna impact it, this is what we're gonna do to mitigate it. So again, it's got a.
That's a good point.
I will never say it's a brick ceiling. I'll say it's a glass ceiling, but it's a ceiling, you know, and uh that gives us the opportunity to negotiate. Maybe negotiate away some to just give impact. Is this for M one only?
Yes.
It's for M one.
Then how come, within the body of this, it talks about uses in the B ones?
Sandy, just to get back to something you were asking about, Brad pulled up the tax map. Life Technologies is a hundred ninety-eight thousand square feet.
Okay, that's the whole development.
No, that's just life tech. Ferneus Cavi is a hundred and seventy-one thousand square feet. And APP Pharmaceuticals has several buildings in there, fifty-eight thousand and sixty-three thousand.
Okay, so those together might, well, one single one is.
They're they're done. Now they've got, they've gotta come in and go in for incentive zoning, which in my.
One hundred and fifty thousand for the one, and then the one next door is additional, how many?
Hundred ninety-eight thousand square feet.
Okay.
Hundred seventy-one thousand square feet, and then APP Pharmaceuticals on the tax map shows one at fifty-eight thousand and one at sixty-three thousand.
Yeah.
Cause they have two separate separate buildings over there.
So I would consider that all.
No, I know, I'm just, I'm just giving you the.
It's a campus.
Campus.
That's a campus we're gonna join. What's that?
Join, join this campus.
Well, I mean, once upon a time.
No, I understand.
Once upon a time, wasn't that all one?
Well, it says here contiguous or non-contiguous lots is a business campus.
You can test the uh recommended.
Dave, you mentioned letter N, maybe? I'm just wondering, why does that say the limit is seventy-five thousand?
N is added. It's not in the existing code, Tim.
Well, no, N is saying that it has to be seventy-five thousand feet or less.
Right.
And then D is seventy-five to one fifty.
Right.
That's a special use, the seventy-five to one fifty.
All right, okay.
So it's seventy-five to start. Then if you're gonna go, you wanna go above seventy-five to one fifty, you go to special use. And then if you wanna go bigger, like the Long Road Distribution Center, he's gonna have to come in under incentive zoning and uh, I'm sorry, I call it, I call it pay to play.
I didn't see the special use part in there.
I guess the point at Twitter is.
I'm from that, I'm from Niagara Falls, and they did that Niagara Falls, Pete, and look at it.
This law were to be passed, would it apply to the Long Island site?
Yes, absolutely.
Even though he submitted plans?
Because they're saying he doesn't have a building permit. Although last town meeting, they just hired a um, a a specialist to go over the seeker process, which he has to pay for. So they've just spent his money, and now they're gonna tell him, no. You can't go more than one fifty unless you go to incentive zoning.
And Norma, I wanted to just, back to your question, um, the last page is is a is a reference to M two district in addition to M one. So it's the four oh seven eighty-seven A applies to M two district as well. Same limitation, a hundred fifty thousand square feet. Okay.
I mean, ideally, if we don't want that to be built on the island, we should find the property.
Well, I I I personally don't think that because he's already started his seeker and has been doing this for a long time, has spent. Let's leave that to what?
No, but I, that's still, that's still our opinion.
To the discussion here.
Right, I mean, I.
No, I I think I can say what I'd like to say, Bob, but thank you for your comment. And I think that once you've started, you should, you can't change the law in the middle of the stream. I agree with that. But I mean, they're changing the law in the middle of the stream. If he didn't apply, I'd say, hey, have at it. Well, we'll see.
Sitting there with nothing going on.
You know, or if he comes in and says, hey, I wanna build this million square foot house warehouse, and he comes to this planning board, we can say we want money set aside for the road damage that you might do, or we want money set aside for a drainage program, or I don't think that it needs to be done in a law. I think I think the system is already there, in my opinion.
Well, there were a number of engineering issues that he needed to address, and I think it prudent to see how they're addressed first and then move forward.
Right, but I mean, again, that's that's not changing a an M one law. That's.
Well, it's also been tabled for over three years, so I don't I don't think it should be considered.
Ultimately, really the question is, we're finding out, I don't have a microphone. If we like the way M one is being used in our town or if we feel like it needs to be changed, that's really the question. It doesn't depend on the project. It's that zoning is that zoning work for working for our town where we're now, where we are now versus the last time we wrote it.
Well, we've done some, anyone have any further discussion? We wanna make a motion? Someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that uh we don't approve this proposed law.
Second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Norm, second by Brad. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Four, two, three, a no's. I'm gonna ask for the no's. Dave, Tim, was that a no? And Amy, no, four to three, so it passed not to approve the law as written. Sorry, Pete.
I would just uh correct, make sure the uh section numbering is is correct. It's uh, there's a, there's two section fives, and there's no section seven on the on the last page.
Okay, next on our agenda. A big one tonight. Review the updated site plan. Is this ransom and
Yes.
and stony? Mr. Hopkins, you back up again? Come on up.
We should give an office on here. Well, you hear it.
We actually have an updated plan. Who's gonna hand each of the other by the way? Kind of fresh off the cross.
I think we got him in the package.
Oh, okay. Well, there was one gate man and a couple over.
Oh, thank you, sir. This is just bigger than what was in our package, or is it looks in the package?
Same thing, uh, but there's additional parking spaces.
Okay. Okay.
Go ahead. Once again, Sean Hopkins, I'll be happy. Also with me is Tim Boyle. As you'll recall, we presented this project to you during your meeting. Um, last week, yeah, last month. Hopefully, I believe you issued a recommendation um opposed to what we're seeking by a four to three vote. This project, similar to the project presented previously this evening, was then presented to the town board during three workshop meetings. Since that point in time, we do wanna thank the town board for allowing us to meet with them on three separate occasions. At its most recent meeting, they referred a fact to the planning board. We're submitting this one third. So this is the plan that we presented to you one month ago. We're gonna focus on this evening, the two things. A couple, we had some concerns about the fact that if you look under the comprehensive plan, this is designated as a B three zone. Kim and I have actually literally read every word of the comprehensive plan. And unfortunately, with respect to this one particular handling, there really isn't much supporting text. I think the B three was put in place, to be honest, because there was a previous applicant that was proposing a retail plaza. And that was a mechanism to stop it. I don't think there's no one back from that time who was involved on either the planning board or the town board. So so would so be it. But we did prepare for the town board, and I wanna make it very, very clear. A plan that just all it does illustrate, this is what someone could do, not what you're proposing is under the existing B three zones. The B three zoning has some real limitations. Number one, no business. We have to be all commercial. You know, there's been discussion about maybe changing it. And number two, what you would be allowed is built with a maximum size of five thousand square feet. And again, this is literally to illustrate, based on the existing zoning today, this is what could be done. We don't wanna do this ultimately. If the zoning is not approved, would there be some demand, maybe for some five thousand square foot buildings or some similar example nearby? Yes, and could um the new mids pull that off in terms of the relations? Possibly, but absolutely no interest whatsoever in pursuing a B three plan. It's literally, it's illustrated. And then this is the current plan, which reflects some refinements that we made during the course of those town board workshops. So here's what we've done. There's more traffic, obviously, located on Ransom Road than Stony Point. So I've taken those lots on Ransom Road, done some that's fairly creative, but I don't think exists in Red Island. Instead of having individual driveways on the Ransom Road, let's go out the back. Put in a private alleyway, and they will, then they will lead back to that existing driveway. We've also then put a bigger, more dense berm behind those single-family homes. Up along Stony Point, literally the day. Up along Stony Point, literally the day of one of the town board workshop meetings, we finally received a jurisdictional determination. From the United States Army Corps of Engineers. And lo and behold, although our consultant disagrees, we do have eight point five two acre, half acre wetland here. Rather than engage with the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, permitting process, we simply got rid of two lots. So we're now showing four lots along Stony Point and. Uh, five lots, six lots along, no, five lots along, um, Ransom, for a total of nine lots, we're down to five. Another issue that came up, and I think it at least was mentioned during the planning board discussion, was we had a series of, we had a mixture. Of two-story, ten-unit buildings. And two-story, twelve-unit buildings, which you can see on the original plan. The twelve-unit buildings, while they look quite nice, would require an area variance from the zoning board of appeals, based on the zoning we're requesting for building length. So we got rid of that, we're not going to the zoning board of appeals, we basically made it so all the buildings comply with the maximum building length of one hundred sixty feet. All the buildings, uh, full family homes, will be two stories. So how we've done that is by replacing the twelve-unit buildings with ten-unit buildings, and we're at the exact same density. Ninety units, it reflects a reduction that we made as a result of adding the single-family homes along both Ransom Road and Stony Point. We've also, at least, conceptually. Demonstrated that with respect to the existing convenience store, there would be the possibility in the future, we're hoping to build out of this community, which creates some additional demand. Put two additional twelve hundred square foot additions onto that building, I wanna emphasize. Twelve hundred square foot, so those would literally be for local businesses, again, a hair salon, dog groomer. Small takeout restaurant type area, so there is some, at least some additional commercial on this side. As you recall, originally, we showed a mixed-use building out along the frontage, that required a variance from the zoning board of appeals. We presented that to the zoning board of appeals during this meeting last August, and it was not well received by either the zoning board of appeals or the actual neighborhood, so. We eliminated that, we actually tend to agree, I just don't, there's a lot of demand for retail space, a whole building worth on this. Where it's like, a couple of the other questions asked were, uh, about laundry facilities, so each of these units will be upper, upper end or luxury. And will include, obviously, its own laundry facilities. We're showing the community facility building here. Which is based on input received from the town's highway superintendent and transportation director of the school district, allowing school buses to pull in. Drop off, school children to wait in that community building, and then exit that way. We've done some enclosures of similar projects, literally this exact building type, it was built Orchard Park, and Orchard Park and Grand Island are not identical. But a similar project with a hundred sixty units has fifteen scored children, so K through twelve grade, fifteen scored children. So we'll generate some demand for educational services, absolutely, but it will be pretty minimal, generally speaking, with the exception of the townhomes on the end. You don't receive a lot of.
So how many apartments are there now?
There's ninety, which is the same.
Oh, so it's the same, okay.
Yeah, except for the buildings are different, so now, instead of. Ten-unit and twelve-unit buildings are all ten-unit.
And there's one more building.
Right, there's one more building, right, exactly. We've also.
Added more parking spaces.
Yeah, so the only change that we've made since the plan that was included your packet, is at the last meeting, town board workshop meeting we attended. While we meet the parking requirement for the overall project easily, it does seem like maybe not as many parking spaces down in this corner. Behind lots number seven, eight, and nine, so we have added four additional parking spaces. Four additional parking spaces here, and keep in mind, this project will also require site planable, so we'll be back with boy and air plan. If we make it through. The rezoning process. I do wanna remind everyone, in terms of. This particular project, so. Tim Boyle has already engaged the services of. An architect, Dave Sutton, while we're no longer designing or including the mixed-use building, we can see that these buildings will be quite nice. Residential style roofs, vertical and horizontal relief, nice balconies, a stone base, so these are. We really think are gonna be very attractive in which, like the ticket to a location. It's also important to note that we've talked to the traffic engineer again, so we just wanna make sure we're on the same page. And the traffic engineer has reiterated, number one, absolutely based on existing conditions, there's a need for a signal at that intersection, I don't think that surprises anyone. And I think there's residents in that facility that have hoped that would occur a long time, so we're gonna have to figure that out, working with the Erie County Department of Public Works. Uh, we have identified at least a grant writer that might be willing to assist either the town or the school district in trying to achieve some funding. Him and I worked on a project in the county of York, which is about an hour away, in which it was also located close to a school. There was a desperate need for sidewalks, and it's been identified for more than two decades, similar to this traffic signal. And ultimately, with the assistance of that grant writer, they were able to get funding from the state for some of the improvements, off-site and on-site, it was a. Complete, uh, complete streets, pedestrian sidewalks, head crossings, et cetera, et cetera, that, that worked out quite successfully. We're certainly willing to engage in that same process here. So we think we've made some good changes, refinements, since we were here last month, and respectfully, what we'd ask you to consider. Is a favorable recommendation, uh, to the town board on this particular request, noting for the record again, that ultimately, the town board will hold a public hearing. Be responsible for issuing a secret determination, a decision on the rezoning application, and then we'll have to come back through with boy and air plans and seek some. There's any questions, of course, either myself or Tim, or welcome our figures also.
And I, I have one, well, go ahead, Norm.
Um, similar question, the last one, these walking trails, paved or not paved?
Give you a similar answer, but I'm not sure, I would think they're going to be a cinder. Um, um, but I'm not opposed to paving.
Okay, I mean, with students, I mean, trying to get over to where the bus is gonna pick them up.
In order, in order to keep, in order to keep the traffic moving in the lunchtime, I would. We have, I have, I have honestly not gotten to that point yet where we've made that decision, but I was thinking about it when you were asking that question, and. I don't think there's any other way than for me to pave them. And I don't have a mile off, so I think.
Yeah.
Pretty reasonable, but. I couldn't keep them safely, uh, I couldn't keep them safe if they were. Wood chips or cinders or.
Or snow removal, yeah.
It would be okay, that being part of our condition, that's.
Yeah. Um, and I mentioned that last month as well, uh, but now that you've increased the number of buildings, having only, uh. One, two.
Yep.
Three, four dumpsters.
Yep, so, um. Essentially, there's one dumpster corral, two dumpsters for every three buildings. I do realize there's a. Potential that we would have to have them emptied twice a week. And that would be at, at our expense, so the difference truly is. Because I don't disagree, I'd like to have more of them, but we, I don't think the demand is there to have one per building, I.
Well, not one per building, but.
I think we could do the nicer corral or two, and, um, I also believe that, you know, I, I'd like to try to squeeze a couple more parking spots in that one location that Sean was referencing, and we just. But I haven't, we haven't gotten to that level yet.
Just, I can't see somebody from building two walking to, you know, the, uh, east or west.
Yeah, don't disagree with it all, I just. Quite candidly, the engineer and I were going back and forth on, I've also been speaking to him to make sure there's enough snow storage. All of the things that nobody thinks about until you have to pay to have the snow removed, and you have to, to your point, uh, incur the cost of emptying the dumpsters twice a week. And it just, you know, so it's, it's a lot less expensive to.
Or having disgruntled people walking that distance to put their garbage in.
Right. And the, and the liability associated with that.
Yes.
And you have convenience, yeah.
Okay.
And unfortunately, the people in the furthest buildings didn't realize the goal is probably to that, so, point well taken, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lots five through nine, are, are you gonna do something on the back, cause that would be their backyard facing. Ransom Road.
Thank you for clarifying, so the houses are still gonna face front.
We're gonna have rear-load garage.
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha, yep, yeah, I've seen that, I've seen it.
We did not think they would be salable lots at all, that they were facing the interior with the backs to the road.
Okay.
It wouldn't have, would not have satisfied the neighbors across the street, um.
Yeah, I've, I've seen it, looks clear, it's, looks nice, it does, I've seen it.
Stuff like that, where you see the rear of the houses as you drive down the principal road, I think it looks terrible, people actually will build that out.
There's, uh, there's units, uh, close to, uh.
We have several streets on the island.
Yeah, towards Buffalo, too. Towards Buffalo with their.
They're all like that.
Face the front, but their garages are to the back, it looks good. Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, the houses would still be oriented towards the downside, it's gonna, it's going to reduce the size of the backyard, but my plan is to, you know. Targeted ranch homes anyways, and probably an elderly population, so I don't think backyard, uh, reduction, the size of, reduction is gonna be a big issue.
What size are those lots?
Walls and playsets. So those lots are R one D, those are R one D lots. So remember, we're actually asking for split zoning, we're asking for one zoning classification to assure the neighbors. That those remain single-family homes, that would be R one D zone. And where the multi-family would be part three currently.
Um, the addition to the convenience store, is that up for review on this too? I mean, is that part of this whole? Okay, I didn't.
Is that gonna be, is that gonna be future, though, Amy? Is that gonna be done now or future?
Uh, I'd like to do it at the, uh, okay times.
So, future?
So the gas station existing, that's actually a two-unit building, hasn't it?
Yeah, explain the existing building, um, it's, it's one unit, the way it sits right.
Right, but I mean, it was idea, it was designed to have two businesses in it.
Absolutely, and that's why, quite frankly, the one and two, they're both twelve hundred square feet, but with the additional room that I have available on these. Stony Point side of that building, I, it, it could be up to a two thousand square foot. Twenty-five hundred square foot space, because there's that kitchen and that dining area that are underutilized. So, you know, um, whether it be, uh, a Charles Butcher, a Tim Hortons, a liquor store, a dry cleaning, a dry cleaners. Uh, as I've said here before, I've been pretty diligent about pursuing those opportunities since we've owned this, uh, but I believe that. Perhaps some additional density, maybe I'll have some more traction.
So on that point, though, where are you gonna provide parking for all those, at, um, I got like fifty-five hundred square feet of space, if you total all those up. A hundred and seventy-five square feet per space, you need thirty spots. Where are you gonna put those thirty spaces?
Pretty confident I can get thirty spaces into that, uh, uh, into that lot, I have a pretty substantial.
I guess.
Lot there.
I guess I'd like to see where they are, because you've got the whole, um, you know, uh. Service station where cars are coming in and out and so on, you know.
And, and, uh, and then, of course, a bigger inhabited parking, that might make those a little bit smaller, of course. And, and to be very candid, I would think my number one opportunity there would be a Tim Hortons. And eighty percent of their business is done in a drive-through.
Well, I guess that brings up the other point, this board approved some years ago a drive-through there, so is a drive-through in the plan or not?
Not, not as it stands today, no.
Okay, so no drive-through. So that you'd have to come back to us for an amendment to do that.
Have to come back to do either one of those, yes, or both.
Sure.
And, and at which time, and you would allow us, at that time, is when I would like to get into the parking, if we'd have to meet the requirement, which will. State a very clear case on why we felt we could do without it, um, and whether or not it included a drive-through, who the tenant was, and was it going to, uh, you know. Be a good thin neighborhood.
Sure.
Was it gonna, yeah. Yeah, that's literally a holding places to show that they could have come. Not meant to be any kind of.
Any other questions?
Okay.
I mean, I defer to, I don't believe so.
Oh, what are you asking?
That's what I was asking.
You know, I was gonna say, this is, this is still essentially, in its rawest sense, an application to rezone the property.
Got it.
The justification. Is a potential concept one.
Right.
You know, how, you know, cause they're, they're asking for, you know, our, our one D, they're asking for R two. You had a B one.
Yeah.
The quarter zone parcel.
Right, the quarter zone, no, the B one at the corner, the convenience store, the rest. And we are not asking for the rezoning of the convenience store. Right, it's ours.
Okay.
So the reasoning that we're asking for is.
Just these two. Got it.
And the lots.
And the lots, yeah, the lots are gonna be downzoned to R one D.
Any other questions from anyone?
It, the only, and I know this looks like an odd thing in the code, but for. Uh. Establishments that are for people over sixty-two years old. And re, and more than one story, you need an elevator. That's what the code, our code reads. So you'll need a variance on that.
That's in your, not in your.
No, you only need an elevator, it, you have to have twenty-five percent. Of the building has to be adaptable, adaptable, so you don't need an elevator in a two-story building.
It's not the way it reads.
Well, how come we didn't put elevators anywhere in Heron Point?
I don't know.
Cause it's not part of both sections of this? These name units are, right, uh.
Well, that would be subject to building approval. No, I mean.
I think what Dave's citing is a town code.
It's a town code.
But it's, it's a town code about senior exclusive, correct?
Nope, says over, over sixty-two, it says over sixty-two and two stories.
That would be hip on the multi-family building.
I know, it's, I'm telling you, it's a weird.
You're saying over sixty-six, you're designating a housing type, they're not, Heron Point did not do a sixty-two, you know, fifty-five and older, older community. Or they're not holding a sixty-two or sixty-two unit.
Six, age sixty-two.
Dave, could you, could?
I, I didn't, I didn't read my code book.
Absolutely not, we're not age restricted at all.
Yeah, Dave, did you, do you have that code that you could give to Mr. Hopkins?
I don't have it with me.
You don't have it, okay.
Yeah, it's not.
I, I got you.
Dave saying that, wait, he read the code, he believes it may apply ever.
Right.
Well, you guys just, you gotta take a look.
Yeah, or not visioning elevators. And it does comply with the here state of building.
Anyone else have any other? Questions?
I, I guess, I, I just.
Oh, Dave's back.
Concern with the traffic and not knowing how that's gonna be resolved in the stormwater issue, and not knowing how that's gonna be resolved.
It's going to be resolved, we have a traffic impact study, Bob has provided in Erie County Department of Public Works, and ultimately, we know that signal is.
But it's gonna be more than a signal, I mean, there's gonna be a bypass lane, or has to be a bypass.
Signal on a turn, yeah, if Erie County says it's gonna be more and want to do more, we, I mean, we acknowledge that needs to be done.
Yeah, so.
Again, remember, that needs to be done, even if we don't do it.
Understand.
We don't do the project, so now we actually have someone that can.
But this adds, but this adds to the traffic that's gonna go.
Definitely does, we're not disputing that at all, and, and then I do wanna talk about drainage, cause again, I don't think it's relative to the land use decision, but it's a comment that's been raised before, it's also a comment that's been raised. By the residents, so we've assured them, and we've met with them over a course of series of informational meetings, that number one, we have to have a code-compliant stormwater management system. Bob knows what that means, we have to accommodate a hundred-year storm event, any drainage is going on our site, but we're willing to entertain going beyond that, we've had these discussions. With Chris Wood, our project engineer, is our goal would be, if we can accommodate, to actually over-design. Our stormwater management system to handle bigger than a hundred-year storm, which I don't believe anyone else has ever done, so. If we can do that, we will, can we resolve all offsite drainage problems in that area? No. But it's, no, no one can. But we also have an abundance of land out by the street on Ransom Road where the primary drainage, uh, uh, ditch currently is, and we are willing to, if we need to contribute additional. Space to that, if, if there's a redesign of it, and, uh, contribution of land is requested, uh, to help. In that design, we're willing to entertain that as well.
Is that, at that point, is it a ditch, or is it a part of Woods Creek?
I, without checking the maps, I couldn't tell you which one that is, but I believe that's all Woods Creek.
Yeah.
Which way does it flow, Norm? Does it flow towards Kirkwood?
Underneath Stony Point, where it goes to the west.
Yeah, it goes west, westward.
Underneath Ransom.
Backyard of Ransom, I believe it's still Woods Creek.
Yes.
Named as a tributary, so it's crossing Ransom, even though it's in a box culvert and going in pipe or whatever ditch section and then crossing Stone, that is all still.
So even cleaning out of that. Ditch might be an issue with DEC.
I don't think.
Because it's Woods Creek. It's not a ditch.
I, I, I don't recall where the, the protected section and that are.
That's done by the town.
Yeah, cause they cleaned out from.
I don't think that's, it's not, I don't believe that section.
I, I don't think that's a jurisdiction.
Yeah, it, it, what do you call it, Norm?
Well, it's jurisdiction.
The town, the town cleaned it out from Stony Point westward. Years ago.
Okay.
Cause I remember, I think Tommy Long did it. And he. Had a three-foot diameter snapping turtle, he sucked out another one in there, but I, I remember last meeting, Bob Westfall even mentioned that a lot of people have encroached.
Yeah.
That sheds and wood piles or whatever, and that's the issue, that the town can't get in there to clean it out, cause all their stuff's in the way.
When I was talking to Portion right in front of the convenience store.
Right, right.
And that portion is cleaned out on a quarterly basis by the town.
Right. It's going the other way, once you get over Stony Point, that's the issue. Right, it's going the other way, once you get over Stony Point, that's the issue that way. So that's not their, their problem.
Stony Point down past Hugh Road, they have water pump.
Uh, question.
Sure.
You said something about York on a grant writer. So when that all was said and done, how much did the town of York had to pay for that improvement? Or roughly, did they have to pay anything?
Uh, I don't know, I can find out for myself, I know that the total, the total grants being applied for.
Was any funding given by your firm for your project towards that? Or was?
Yep, yeah, it was, it was a collective effort, yeah, and it all had to do with proximity to the school.
And, and you would be willing, and you would.
It was writ, our, our part of the contribution was, um, it cost us um, about two hundred thousand dollars. Was all of the sidewalks on our project, just like here. Uh, the entire length of both roads, because it was also a partner. And we funded the striped crosswalks and the pedestrian pull stations, because there's already a signal at the intersection. And the grant funded primarily from our site to the high school complex, all of the sidewalks. Because very similar circumstances where it had been identified in a number of comprehensive plans. Uh, that, that was a, you know, it was a risk to the children and.
Right.
You know, and the.
But you have, you have sidewalks on Ransom now. And, and Stony Point too.
Remember, this is a grant deal with safety of support.
Right.
Yeah, that's, we're not saying it's the exact same, but I don't.
There's sidewalks on, on Stony Point on this side of Ransom Road.
Yeah, not on our side.
On that side, now there's sidewalks going around the gas station, right?
Yes.
Sidewalks going around the gas station, and you're gonna put sidewalks in on lots one through four and five through nine.
Yes, yeah.
On the street side.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and then there, there is existing sidewalk at the daycare and then all the way down, I believe, in front of all the singles.
Yeah.
So that's all gonna be tied in.
So, so is it fair to say that we could ask you? That you will make some type of financial contribution towards this, whatever, the red light, turning lane, whatever. Whoever decides that.
I, I don't know if we can do any of that because this is just a rezoning and it's not a development plan.
No, but in a, it, it ultimately, to answer your question, we expect at some point in this process. We are prepared to participate in that financially, and if you wanna make that a recommended condition sometime.
Yeah, I, I think that's fine, Tim, we can ask that, the town can always kick it.
We've already got an estimate. The estimated value of the improvements is a minimum of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Three, and that's, that doesn't include the design fees. It includes the sidewalks, the design fees, right. I know it didn't include the design fee, but it was, that, for that for the signal, crosswalk, pedestrian pull stations. Design fees, churning length.
Okay, anyone? I recall, I recall last time, I think we had, or some information uh from one of the neighbors that was suggesting a um. Sort of a bypass on the east end to get students going uh towards the high school and avoiding, I don't see that uh addressed.
I just don't see putting another curve.
Well, it's just a.
It's gonna be opposite someone's thought. Well, and since we've made the alleyway, and it, it, it really just doesn't make a ton of sense, in my opinion. Um, essentially what he's asking for is he believes that the children by nature, and I'm sorry. He, he would like a, he'd like a sidewalk, he'd like us to shift everything down.
Mm-hmm.
And he'd like a sidewalk here.
Yes.
But that ultimately would mean that, that, that someone's gonna be what? Coming from this point or that point all the way to this point, his, his thinking is that they would circumvent the sidewalks on the site to get closer. Towards the school.
Yep, but right, right now you have a sidewalk coming right next to those parking spaces, that's already there. It's just at, at the other end.
Right.
Yeah. You already have it drawn here, correct? So, it, I don't know, it seems more sense to come out that way than to cut down this private road. And then come down Lot Nine. You already have it designated there, like going right in by the clubhouse and.
Yeah. And, right.
I mean, how many sidewalks do you need?
These are all private roads?
Yes, they're not even roads, remember, this is, this will be private driveway access house, yeah.
Okay, you've got the same issue here, when you plow along here, you're plowing cars in. Right, there's an entrance here.
Yep.
And there's parking spots right there.
Yeah, we'd have to clean them up.
Yes.
Remember, it's the same facility would be doing.
It's the same provider.
And we'd be, yeah, it's, it's private lot and we'd be, we'd be responsible to.
They can use smaller.
And if we have to, so we have to. Yeah, that's. And that's definitely a, uh, what I would say is that, you know, the next level of conversation and make sure that we have. Uh, you know, proper uh snow stores on site.
Okay, motion.
I just wanted to clear, we're okay with the condition, there was the need for the outside. It has to be done.
I'll make a proposal, I mean, I think the changes that they did from last month are, are considerable and they're, it is a, a good improvement. Uh, I recommend that we approve the um, the changes in zoning uh based upon this concept plan. With the provisos that the walking trails are paved, provide more garbage areas. And provide enhancements in the traffic, as was mentioned. Traffic control.
Enhancements and financial obligations.
That would provide.
Right, provide some. Okay.
Provide the enhancements for uh traffic control.
At the other, I would reference the other section.
At the intersection.
Yes.
Of ransom and stolen.
And it would be financial. Anyone else? Want to add? Yeah, okay, Brad second. Any further discussion?
My only comment is that we shouldn't be referencing. Sidewalks or paths or anything to do with this development.
Because it's zoning, yeah.
I understand what we're trying to do here.
Right.
But it's not about this concept plan.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Amy, what did you do?
I said yes.
Yes, so we got uh five, five yes, and Tim and Sandy were no's.
Yeah, and the reason I, I agree with Tim on his comment there.
But is that a reason to recommend the answer to the building?
No, it's, it's just a.
I, I wouldn't.
Yeah, and it's just, it's just a point over that we're discussing things that's are not part of that contract, either way, it has.
You're all set, five to two. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr..
Previous project, the revenge thing was a five-two vote, but the two votes that were in disagreement were actually pertaining to whether or not we have to reduce lots.
Yes.
Could we change that and just get a unanimous recommendation?
Yeah.
No, the vote was done.
The vote's done.
Vote was said, vote was done. They were against it.
I mean, I was against it because.
They were.
Because of the lot.
I, I didn't think they should have to reduce the size of that.
Yeah, that was a.
That was the only, I was against, I wasn't against, and I was against your motion because you're trying to make them reduce the size.
Right, right.
Increase the size.
Right, well, I mean, sorry, that's right, you were trying to make them increase.
Well, that, that information is on the. Yeah, but it's, they watch the meetings on YouTube.
And it's the same issue that's coming up here, it's like, we're agreeing to conditions and certain numbers, they, there shouldn't be the conditions, but it sounds like you're okay with the rezoning.
Well, your vote was clear, five to two.
I know.
Okay.
I would be yes. I would be yes.
And then I would be a no without the conditions. So let's stay where we're at, we're five to two, five to two it is, sir. Yes, sir, thank you for coming in.
That, that.
Thank you.
Four oh seven fifty-seven E, no, no.
Okay, communications, I'm gonna say received and filed. Um, did everybody get a copy of the ALD traffic report? If not, I'll have Arlene send it out when they.
Old and it probably should.
Everyone did? Okay.
Yeah, that's true.
Just, we'll maybe resend that when they do apply so that we have it. Okay? And then we, we don't have any report on the const- comprehensive plan, the meeting was canceled, so that's all we're done. Unfinished business, long road, distribution, I'm sure no one's here for that. So we'll leave that as unfinished business. Code enforcement, we're at eighteen twenty-one Whitehaven, is anyone here for that? Eighteen twenty-one Whitehaven, site plan application. They had sent a letter in that they wanted to come and talk to the board. Okay, um, leave it, we'll, we'll leave it as table. Or an unfinished business, and the same thing for twenty-two thirty-four Bedell Road, no one? Okay?
Well, I will give an update, we did meet with that applicant. And Casey and I met with him and went over the requirements of what was last. Sorry, let's Casey, with Ron and myself, um, and went over with him our requirements. He took that information, understood completely, and so we're awaiting.
We're waiting, okay, so we'll leave it as unfinished business, now we're back to River Town Development.
I, sorry, can we go back to one, should we, we talk about it every week, but can we take the. Distribution facility off unfinished business? It's been unfinished for over three years.
Well, you, you could say that, Simon, but they literally just responded with the draft at the I S. To the town, submitted the documents, the town has hired. A additional technical service to assist it with that piece of the puzzle, so they're coming in to seek your determination. Which then puts this board back on the spot for the site plan. The plans exist.
It's just been slow going, Tim.
It is stuck in secret process.
Okay.
So we're, we'll leave it on.
They just provided for the process there without.
Okay, let's go forward, River Town Development, anyone here for the River Town? Come on up, folks.
Chairman Bruno, I'd like to recuse myself from this uh project.
Okay, Sandy, thank you, so you're, you're up, John. Okay, what do we got?
Let me just find us to ask this forward for the recommendation on the detailed plan and part of River Town's uh plan. Back in October of two thousand twenty-one, this board issued a favorable recommendation under the town's application. For a rezoning of the site, you know, R three and CBD to the P V Ds. And we proposed a P V D number four, which had certain incentives and charges from the zoning code. To accommodate the project, and this board, in an extensive review, ultimately issued recommendations that the town board approved the concept plan. And then following several months of meetings and a hearing with the town board, the town board approved the concept plan in April of two thousand twenty-two. And after that approval, for example, that was Mr. Hoffman's uh, in his first presentation was here on the concept plan. So after this board issued its recommendation, the town board issued approval of the concept plan. There was all a lot of time for the applicant to, that's been developing detailed drawn, fully engineered plans. To meet the codes, detailed plans, middle requirements. So then in November of two thousand twenty-three, the applicants provided a copy of the detailed plans. And that was provided to Mr. Westfall, who reviewed and provided comments to this board following that submission. And the applicant appeared in January, went over some of the pain discussion plan. And after that meeting, Mr. Westfall provided comments, and the project teams had reviewed the engineering department's comments and to accommodate that. Wrong, but I do believe that they provided updated plans to you in response to those comments to fully address everything that was in the.
Plans we brought up today, well.
Thank you, so the plans are in front with Mr. Westfall, who has, of course, I can't review them in a span of twenty-four hours. So the nature of my correspondence to this board at the end of January was to ask for an opportunity to appear at this meeting and ask this board for its favorable recommendation. On the detailed plan, so that the process can move forward to the town board's phase of the detailed plan approval. Again, will require another hearing and the town board to keep that up. So the purpose of this meeting was to shift the uh detailed plan review from this board's prescription on the subdivision. To the town board, which has a final approval. The nature of the criteria for this board when they're evaluating the plan, is does it substantially conform to the concept plan that was approved by the town board? Yeah, and I believe Frank Gigi is on the line and he can, I some discussion. About the updates to the development concept plan.
Let me see, if I can just quick, and from our initial plan, our comments left for agency engineer. There was nothing, in my professional opinion, substantive that was gonna cause a drastic redesign or change. The updates that they made, um, you know, they are not something that caused large change, nor do we see any. Um, you know, need to do any of that piece in supporting the technical drawings. You know, we are quite satisfied with where we are on it. So it isn't like a, you know, I'm gonna say, no, we can't do that that way, change something drastically, we can change the site, we're not at that at all. It is a very well-prepared set of plans, we just have to go through the last chapter, but it is not gonna result really. And any, causing any further change, so literally the plan really is, you know, to you guys now for that council.
And again, the nature of this board's review at this phase is, is not a technical, it's not the full-blown site training view. And it is, does this detailed plan signal substantially conform to the concept plan? That the town board threw in April two thousand twenty-two, and the code sets out a number of criteria to tell you when, cause you in a plan doesn't conform. And those sorts of issues are large departures from the setbacks that were approved, large departures from the parking. Large departures from lap cover or other yard plants. Substantial changes in traffic circulation that will negatively impact circulation. None of those changes are relevant in the, in the minor developments from the concept plan to the detailed plan phase. All the changes in the detailed plan actually accommodated many board comments. And lots and lots of feedback from the public, community members to different property directors. And now the detailed plan, basically uh embodies all of those comments and presented a plan that incorporated all of that input. So any departures are to be amenable to comments that we've received, and none of the departures warrant this board finding. Uh, that the plant is not conform, so the board here is in a position to recommend approval of the detailed plan. Because it conforms to the concept plan that's already been approved as board and the town board.
So the only new information, at least, that's in front of us are primarily the elevations of the uh athletic facility, is that right?
Exactly, following the meeting in January, uh, based on the board's feedback, to develop the run back to the table. And develop a different rear facade.
Mm-hmm.
Make it more attractive.
I'm a comment on that.
Yeah.
I'm not in favor of what I see here, I don't think it goes along with the rest of your uh buildings. And to me, it, it looks, I don't know if you call it simplistic or it just doesn't fit the character. I think of the rest of the buildings.
Yeah, I would like to see mixed materials in there. The colors, I mean, I don't know if that's, that's terrible.
If I may, this would be a perfect opportunity to continue those comments, giving recommendations that have been worked through the development plan or the detailed. Plan and that the scope of the board's review at this point is just does it conform to the concept plan? And if there are additional changes that you would like the applicant to consider, those could be included.
So this is in a flat roof building, this is on an angle, it, it looks like it to me, right?
Yes, it's a pitch to it.
It's a, there's a pitch to that roof.
I'll refer to Frank or what, if I may, I, if Frank would enable the timing, just to describe a particular.
Looks like it, looks like a shed roof.
Yeah.
On the one side, yeah, but it's pitched, the pitched shed roof, right?
What is it called when you, when you come in and you put a?
Like a belly band.
Yeah, like what Mazur puts on his bed.
Yeah, so there is a pitch to the roof, um, I believe it pitches back.
Right. Webber oak.
So.
Would it be more appropriate? Norm, are you complaining more of the colors? It looks like a circus building to me, I, no offense, but. Yeah, it looks like something I'd see at the.
I mean, it just, I mean, when you look at the, you know, your building picays, I mean, it doesn't go with that theme at. I mean, it doesn't go with that theme at all. And since it wraps around the sides too, I think it does it to service to the rest of your buildings.
Wasn't this gonna be like a prefab?
It's gonna be a pre-engineered metal, but obviously we can integrate different facades to it.
It's gonna be a metal building?
It's gonna be a pre-engineered metal. But again, you can do reliefs in the side.
Right.
On the exterior, so we're open to those kinds to make it as appealing to the.
Cause now the, the back view will face.
Web.
Yeah, houses.
Yeah.
Web? So what, what side, what side's gonna? Put me where I'm supposed to be. What side's gonna face Grand Island Boulevard?
Well, three-ish.
Yeah, but still.
It's like, like three.
Number three is probably the closest you're gonna get to the view from there, Dave.
Okay, what about Grand Island Boulevard?
Yeah, that's what he's saying.
Three? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, this would give a bar.
Oh yeah, that's where that drainage though. I remember I'm talking about that drainage wall.
Right.
David. Like a better term, call it a valley band going around the bottom of the building. Um, if you look on Grand Island Boulevard, we have some steel buildings that are built with. So there's a break, so it doesn't look like.
Maybe some dimension.
Maybe some more.
That's an improvement.
Yeah, I mean, on the corner, something to dress about because it just looks.
I just think when you look at.
It looks like a Butler building.
When you look at the, this building, and then I look at the rest of your buildings, it just doesn't seem like they go together. I just think the coloring.
Yeah.
Come up with some different colors. Maybe some.
That would tie in.
Right. I mean, I've even seen, I've even seen steel buildings where they put like what, what Brad was mentioning. They put like one color across the bottom and a different color up. You know, to get to just break it off.
Stone.
More earth tone.
I mean, they have.
I mean, you don't have, I don't know if we're really asking you to stone the building, but.
Yeah, I mean, like you said, I mean, you can do it. It's essentially synthetic stuff, so it.
Right.
Come panelize and.
Right.
So yes.
Yeah.
And not to be critical either, but that, the windows are not all that attractive.
Well, I think, I think if you see different colors in the walls, Norm, I think the windows will look better.
Yep.
Well, yeah, I think windows are gonna be necessary. If you have fields inside there, you want natural light.
So, so what's the height of, at the low, at the low point, at the low point of the slope? Where, where do you start there? Is that twenty feet, thirty feet? How, how high is this building?
Twenty-eight.
What?
Twenty-eight.
Okay. Um, it would seem to me like you got the slope going the wrong way. That the low point should be in the middle rather than at the edge because. The drainage, the way you have it, is gonna be going all, all over the website. And that's gonna be downspouts and so on. I think it would be better to go the other way and have internal drainage. And deal with it that way rather than externally. Well, the way the build, the way the roof is sloping, it's, it's gonna be exterior drainage and I don't think we want that. We don't want gutters and downspouts.
And part of the design aesthetic of why we pursued that was to actually decrease what appeared to be the size, the size and scale of the building to Webber. So obviously, part of the original site plan was to have that transition period. So obviously, when we looked at the grand scheme of what the, the, the P D D was, you're transitioning from southward to northward from a perspective. And so if you, if you pitch that roof to the point where the, the highest point was on that south side.
And it looks big.
From the backyard of the Webber, Webber residence, it would look worse. So we're, we're trying to make it as, as small.
But I think you should have a, a constant parapet around the whole building. Everything you see from the outside should be at the same elevation. Internal to that parapet.
But it's not a flat roof.
Let me finish, Brett. Internal to that, you're gonna have a roof slope. Roof slope should be internal, not external.
Yeah, but that's from the elevation from Webber looking to, to, to do that parapet to the point where it obscures any of the pitching. It's gotta be higher. So then it's gonna make the building look taller and not so many feedback where you're seeing Webber, but it's make the building.
So then the architectural challenges did not have verticality, but they have horizontal, so horizontal windows, horizontal lower banding. Um, and the, the primary facade that people are gonna see coming down Grand Island Boulevard is, to Dave's point, is that. Right side of, of, uh, view three that you have. And that really has to be dressed up. And I would refer you to, the comprehensive plan has some design standards, architectural design standards. Uh, and there's some suggested mixed-use, uh, facade details in there that I think I'd like to have you review, look at and reflect on. So.
Across the board, we're open to improve.
Yeah, but this is, I, I'm with, uh, Norm and the other people. This is underwhelming, uh, compared to the rest of the facility.
And the thing too with the parapet wall, that's a nightmare.
Yeah.
It's a nightmare.
You're gonna have a parapet wall, you're gonna have scupperheads coming out with.
Yeah, it's, it's a nightmare for your maintenance down the road. It's the worst thing to put up here is a parapet wall. You're better off to do a gutter. It's, it's, yeah, they're. It's a flat roof, then you're, the thing's gonna be leaking every time you go in the facility. We're gonna see stained tiles. It's, it's not a. It's not a functional roof system. But I do think you need like Dave, like Dave, even if he got the windows and split them in half and, you know, brought them down a little bit from the eve and ran a band or. Some little, you gotta come up with a little something. Color-wise and possibly some window relocation. Um. I, I think them have more earth tones. And.
What I'm hearing from the town is that for a facade that incorporates more earth tone, that incorporates elements of the other buildings.
Oh, most definitely.
Right. Right, right.
Rest those issues for the side of this athletic.
And don't show any elevation of the, the front face of this. Would you be using?
The front face, I think it's the bottom.
Yeah, the. What I would call the view, the view between buildings three and four, we don't see anything on that side.
Looking at the entrance to building six.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, what you're seeing in the rear is the front. There is a grand entrance and what the image should be of the grand.
Well, there's no, you don't have that on there.
Well, it's on.
I got west, east.
Yes.
Submission, maybe.
Oh, the previous. So you're gonna have one meeting.
Yeah, I actually have, I have, I have.
Where is it?
It's not.
Jen, can you hold it up?
Jen, can you hold it up? Cause I don't have it.
It's not on my plane.
It's not on my plane.
It's in a previous submission.
Here's.
Yeah.
There it is, Norm.
So it's not the one that goes wrong.
He says, go ahead.
It looks like the same material. It's just more different gray or.
It's the same material, it just has a relatively random.
Now, see, Norman, can you see this one?
Well.
Just gonna put it up on the screen in a minute.
Oh.
I must have it here, cause I've got all of last week's.
Yeah, I didn't get it. That's why I was asking about where I was here. I was like, hold on, I'm getting confused. Ain't good at this.
Yeah, the very last page of what Arlene gave us.
Last week.
The last month.
Bob gave us last.
Oh, last week. I didn't bring it with me.
Yeah, it is.
Well, he, he's gonna. He's gonna pull it up on the screen quickly. This one? And then, um. So what you're asking for is for us to.
For a recommendation to the town board to approve the detailed plan. As submitted.
That P B D.
In November two thousand twenty-three. Revised Mr. Westall comments in January. Would be the difference for us before, because we understand that the revisions to the, uh, detailed plan, Mr. Westall requested after the January meeting. He had received those revisions, he doesn't have a chance to review them and acknowledge that they comply. So I think that they will meet all of his requirements. And that upon the, upon the engineering department. Signing off on the latest revised plans, we'll be able to move to the town board. So what we're asking for is a recommendation from this board to approve the detailed plan.
I, I don't see how we can do that. We haven't seen them.
Well, you have. You have the plans in front of you since November two thousand twenty-three. And the changes that were made were absolutely minor.
I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable approving something I haven't ever seen.
That's the basis of the petition. So in light of the fact that is, has been pending in front of the planning board since November two thousand twenty-three. Typically, the planning board has a thirty-one day clock to issue its recommendation. Though in this case, I understand because the board wasn't able to receive the engineering department's review ahead of its December or ahead of its January meeting. As an accommodation, the applicant has said, we will respond to all of the engineering comments. And the applicant provided a full set of plans, Bob with Bob's review. So to move this project forward in light of the length of time that has already elapsed since the applicant first provided the detailed plans. We're asking that this board issue its recommendation to approve the, the, the detailed plan because it substantially conforms to the concept plan. So this is not a full site plan review. The only, the scope of this board's review is, does the detailed plan? Is, does it substantially conform to the concept plan? And the only thing that makes it fall out of performance are massive departures in setbacks. Lot coverage, traffic circulation patterns. And the criteria that's spelled out in the code at four oh seven one twenty-one C two A, it lists the number of criteria that would, that would deem a project not in substantial performance. None of those, none of those thresholds are triggered here. And so this plan undoubtedly substantially conforms to the concept plan. This board is comfortable in self-interpretation. That in sending a detailed plan to the town board, it substantially complies with the concept plan that this board has already reviewed and approved. And so the only remaining thing for the engineering department to do. Is to run through the plans that were revised with only minor comments from Mr. Westall. And once he's been able to do that, we'll move on to the town board. But that won't change the scope of this board's review at this time. Those changes were relevant to the criteria. That this board is evaluating. It's substantial performance. Does the detailed plan substantially conform to the concept plan? The answer then is yes. Under the code, this board shall recommend approval to the town board.
And then we could put, subject to approval of the engineering department?
I mean, yeah.
Is that okay? So we're, so we're. So we're, we're, we're recommending the, the detailed plan. Approve the detailed plan. And we don't have to mention the concept plan?
No.
You're, you're basically finding the detailed plan to be in general performance with the concept.
Okay, so we're approving the detailed plan, subject to approval of the engineering departments. Subject to approval of the engineering departments. Would we call that review, Bob, or?
And also subject to different material on the outside of the.
That would be one.
Athletic facility.
And two would be.
So I like the, I like the front of it.
What? Well, this. All doesn't have the snow's colors.
Right.
There's nothing like what you said.
Actually looks like a high school.
I mean, even if, even if he did, uh, uh, correct me, Amy. I mean, even if he did something on the bottom color A and a different color above, I mean, it's a big building. It's a big, it's not gonna be a home. Don't you think, Amy, or? I just think when I look at, when I look at this, I just kinda, I'm sorry, I kinda laugh a little bit. When I see the colors, you know?
The long front side of this, we have ideally what are. Worst case scenario window, the best case scenario, our garage, so you can integrate the outside and the inside. Obviously, you're getting more of that transition here where it's on the backs, where there's essentially just a walkway and then a, a wall. Um, it wasn't as attractive, but we can integrate more of that out of.
We reviewed this back in November. We saw this.
Uh.
Yes.
Yeah, or whatever, cause Jen has the, the drawings that was submitted. Yep, so we looked at that. I think our commentary then was the other sides, which you presented tonight.
Yeah, it clearly did not go far.
Well, but I mean, it made an improvement, but it's, you're, you're right. Um, but, so that's, I mean.
Great.
I like the high windows. I actually do like the high windows. I just think, like I said, if we put a different color band around it and made the building not straight, I think it would look a lot better.
Okay, motion, I'm gonna make the motion, I guess. Motion to approve the detailed plan. Subject to the approval of the engineering department's review. That's one. And two would be. To change the more earth tone, possibly, uh.
Sides in the back.
Belly band of these other.
Yes.
Yeah, the, of the back, west and east sides. Right.
Yeah, the, the two sides in the back.
Okay. Go ahead, Arlene. All right, here we go. We're gonna, I'm, my motion is to approve the detailed plan. Subject to the approval of the engineering department's review. That's number one. And number two would be to improve the. Exterior.
Elevation.
Elevation colors and possibly introduce other materials. Amy, help me out, Amy.
Approve and, approve and resubmit.
Yeah. And the rear and the sides.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that was my motion.
Well, the art.
No, we're gonna.
The, the architectural, I mean, we've gotta see it. You can't describe architecturally how it's gonna look. We need, we need renderings to show us what it's gonna look like. And we don't have those right now.
The scope of this board's review is to determine whether or not the detailed plan substantially complies with the concept plan. And while we are absolutely open to accommodate this board's feedback in the aesthetic features of the sides and the rear of building six. It doesn't go to whether or not this board fulfills its obligation, it should recommend a day time to the town board.
Well, it certainly doesn't conform to that.
Are, are you gonna be coming back again?
Not this board. There's a full suite of the zoo and some of the town board as well, hearing.
Right. But you're never coming back to us again for. Anymore of your site plan stuff.
Building in time, you would do site plan for each building.
Right. So then we could, we could address the materials at that point, correct?
So the, the, the way that the review works is that this is, this is the opportunity to. Recommend to the town board whether or not the detailed plan substantially complies with the concept plan.
Okay, then I'll, I'll do my motion number one only. And then you know where we are, the way we're going on the color part.
That is positively taken.
Okay, then I'll stick with my motion to approve. For number one.
Yes.
Right.
Second.
Does that feel, you feel better with that? Okay. Second by Norm.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Crosswalk, where?
So if you look between building, if you look at building floor on the northwest. Going on to, what is that, building one above it? Yeah. That you see the crosswalk that between building two and three on the east side. And then the center, there's a crosswalk. And then when you look, this is the center part of this whole area on the very, um, west side there. There's no cross area there. And I was wondering.
I see. You're looking for a corresponding crosswalk.
Yeah.
With building one and four to match two and.
Four to one, yes. On, on the very, uh, west side. Upper northwest side.
Let me just point out too, when you're coming down Grand Island Board, that facade is gonna tell the whole story of your complex. So that looks lousy.
Yeah, and.
It's gonna reflect on the whole.
And I probably, we, we are going to address it and, uh, I completely understand that concern. And, and obviously, we want this to be as a, as every one of the other buildings, as well as the community to fully embrace what that building is. Uh, and if it's a, kind of a beacon to this property and we, we see that as an anchor tenant for the entire facility. We don't want the building to be, uh.
Right.
We're not, we're not gonna invest all of our money that is building in every single house. Why didn't adjust that?
Right.
We take the points on the eastward and. We take the points on the eastward and rearward thoughts particularly, improving the aesthetic role consistent with this board's comments.
Okay, so I had a motion, second by Norm. Any further discussion on the motion?
Let me just say, I I'm gonna vote against this only because I haven't seen the plan. I have no issue with Bob's expertise and ability to look at it. But we don't have it in front of us.
Can we get to the vote first, Dave? We had a mo- a motion is second, no more discussion, all in favor.
Hi. Hi.
All against?
No.
And Dave stated why his, he was a no.
You're about.
So three, six, six to six, one, please, Arlene. You guys are all set. Thank you for coming in. Don't disappoint us on the building and the sidewalk, okay? Um. Don't forget. Sure, with the computer there, don't.
I won't forget.
All right, don't, don't, don't forget. Don't disappoint us on the what we discussed, okay? Thank you. Yeah.
Both of, both of either.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So, yes, so moved.
So moved. Any discussion? Second by Tim. Any discussion, all in favor?
Bye.
Thanks, everyone.